I'd like to bring to order the April 23 meeting on the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President.
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 Present, thank you for the introduction.
Vice President Edwards.
Councilor Edwards is present.
Councilor.
Yeah.
She had to read our name tags.
Consent agenda. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes of March 26, 2018. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes of March 12, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes, April 13, 2018. Approval of executive session minutes, special meeting, April 3, 2018. Receipt of minutes from the filing boards and commissions. Harbor and Coast to Water Management Commission Two, Budget Committee, Open Space and Land Preservation Commission Two. Correspondence. Receive and file Charleston Resolution in support of H. 7769 and S. 2751 relating to subdivision of land. Charleston Resolution in opposition of S. 2413 relating to zoning ordinances. Charleston Resolution in support of the removal of the sunset provision regarding the residential mortgage foreclosure mediation. Approval of tax assessor abatements. Treasurer Denise Sherret, March expenses and revenue reports. Approval of proclamation for Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, Saturday, October 28 through Saturday, May 5, 2018. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Councilor Hilton.
CA 3B, please.
Anyone else? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Madam President, motion to approve the consent agenda minus CA 3B.
Motion been made in second, all those approved. CA 3B.
I actually have a request for the town administrator. I realize that CRMC is very worried about sea level rise and protecting our coast, but I'm not entirely sure that our neighbors in Charlestown, and I haven't really looked at this, may have a point in that this ordinance may or may not be entirely appropriate. So I was going to ask the town administrator if he might, when he has a moment, review it and see whether or not it would have any negative impacts for us here in Tiverton. Tony's looking at me like...
It's the Free Board statue.
I know, yeah, it's the Free Board statue. And I know it's a little bit controversial. And, you know, we have a lot of coastline too, so I was wondering if the administrator might, as well as the town solicitor, offer an opinion as to whether or not we could also voice our concern.
I'll be glad to look into it and to consult with the solicitor.
Thank you.
Motion to approve CA 3B.
So moved.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Open Farm, do I have anything on the list, Jeanne?
No.
Councilor Edwards is going to read the proclamation for Tiverton Litter, because obviously I have a cold and I'm losing it here.
All right, so this is for CA 6. The Town Council at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, April 23, 2018, by motion made and unanimously passed, did proclaim, at the request of the Tiverton Garden Club and the Tiverton Litter Committee, quote, "Think green, keep it clean." Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, Saturday, April 28, 2018, through Sunday, May 5, 2018. And then there's details to follow.
Thank you. Open Farm announcements, comments, questions, and presentation. Nobody signed up. The first one on the agenda is Sandy Ox's National Mental Health Month proclamation, May 2018. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sandy Ox. I am the marketing and public relations person for Newport Mental Health in Middletown, but we serve all of Newport County. And so, May 2018 is National Mental Health Awareness Month. Just wanting to let everyone know, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress, that's for sure, whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and state. One in four older adults experiences a mental health disorder in Newport County, believe it or not. Teens who attempted suicide is twice as high in Rhode Island compared to the national average. And with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive, meaningful lives. And whereas businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and treatment, prevention, and also mental health first aid efforts. And that's what we've been doing at the Tiverton Schools. Jamie Lahane, the president of Newport Mental Health and I, we conducted a mental health first aid session there. So, I would like to encourage folks here, parent groups, nursing homes, faith groups, any kind of group in Tiverton, to call us, and we'll be happy to provide the training. It's a very interactive training in mental health first aid. Therefore, I guess I'm saying your part. President Denise DiMaderis proclaims May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Tiverton, and Denise DiMaderis also calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tiverton to recommit community, the community, to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to actually read the proclamation from the council?
John's going to read the proclamation from the council.
All right. This may sound a little repetitive. So, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burdens of mental health conditions, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, and citizens share the public burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and mental health first aid efforts, therefore, the Tiverton Town Council does hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Tiverton, Rhode Island. As the Tiverton Town Council, we also call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tiverton, Rhode Island, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. From the Tiverton Town Council, April 23, 2018.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Open Farm Two, presentation by the Recreation Commission on summer programs. I know that's represented.
Hi, Chris, from the Tiverton Recreation Commission. I didn't have a lot prepared on the summer programs, other than that we're going to be running the Parks Program again, as we have the last few years. We also have a number of individual vendors that are going to come up and offer programs like the paddle boarding, lacrosse, arts camp, so a number of activities for people who want to participate. The other item that I wanted to bring to the agenda possibly is we were looking at hosting a summer sunset music series down at Fogland Beach, something that we kind of do maybe end of July through August, six weeks, seven o'clock to nine o'clock on Thursdays, and basically do some acoustic music, maybe a beach fire, but really something for the whole town to come down, picnic, and we'd just like the council's approval to at least go out. We're going to do a little fundraising for it. We've got some vendors have stepped up, they're looking to help us with it.
Can we vote on this, or does it have to be on the next agenda?
I'd recommend that you do it for the next agenda, and I don't think that's going to be a problem for the Parks and Rec.
Is that okay?
That's great.
We'll actually put it on there, and if you want to give us more information on it, it'll be on the first May agenda.
And we should have the Parks and Rec program set for the summer by next Tuesday. So we'll send it off to you guys. You'll get it before everybody else sees it. We're hoping to have it go out to the schools within the next two weeks.
Now, is Fogland equipped to do this with electricity and everything?
Yep.
Okay.
We checked it out, we have like an area set up where it would work, and yeah, I think it'd be kind of nice, you know, just basically something for the town, and yeah, I think it'd be kind of nice.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question for this. I mean, I think it sounds great, but I just have a question for the solicitor. Would they need to get a sound variance?
Depends on how much noise is going to be generated.
Is it amplified, or is it acoustic, or?
It'd be low amplification, but primarily acoustic stuff, you know?
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just don't want to, I just want to make sure you have everything that you need.
As long as it doesn't reach the decimal.
That's correct, yes.
So that would all depend if it reaches the, because I know when we do sing it out, it doesn't reach the...
It's not too loud.
No, the decimal amount.
You just might want to consult with the chief of police on that issue.
No AC/DC cover bands.
No, okay.
Why not?
That might be fun.
Acoustic version, unplugged.
We've done unplugged before.
Sure.
All right, all right, so I'll put it on the first May agenda.
Appreciate it, thanks.
You're welcome. Public hearing, advertised public hearings, CDBG 2017 grant application, second public hearing, first hearing was held in November, council approval to file application. Anyone from CBG here that'd like to say anything?
Good evening, councilors. I'm Christian Belden with Church Community Housing Corporation. As you may know, Church Community has assisted the town in its preparation and administration of the CDBG grant program for many years now, since 1986. This year, the proposals to apply for the CDBG program that we've received and developed are those that were provided on the list of activities that were in your packet, which are, number one, a public facilities activity for the town to provide funding for sewer main extension laterals onto Shoav and Hooper Streets in North Tiverton in the amount of $100,000. Another public facilities activity to replace existing conventional electric hot water tanks with high-efficiency heat pump hot water heaters to serve 50 affordable apartments at Sandy Woods Farm, the amount of $47,000. A public services activity to support the Women's Resource Center for Housing and Community Services related to domestic violence, the amount of $4,000. Another public services activity to provide operating support for the Community Housing Resource Board slash Housing Hotline of Newport County to affirmatively further fair housing in Newport County and provide housing counseling, referral services, and education to the residents of Newport County, the amount of $6,000. And housing developments, this is authorization to apply to the CDBG Affordable Housing Set Aside to acquire, rehabilitate, preserve, and develop properties for ownership and rental housing to benefit low and moderate income households. That amount is $0 because that program is in ongoing set aside. And then, the last activity is the administration funding for the town for this program in the amount of $23,550. And I'd just like to remind you that once the public hearing is closed, the council will need to vote to authorize the submission of the activity. I believe the authorizing resolution was also included in your packet.
Yes.
And then there's just one last item, actually. The state has requested that for regional activities, like the Women's Resource Center and the Community Housing Resource Board, where they provide services to many different communities, and where they're requesting relatively small amounts of grant funding, that those activities actually be assigned by one town or many towns, and then assumed by a lead community. And so, I would recommend that the town of Tiverton assign those two public service slots for the Women's Resource Center and the Community Housing Resource Board over to the town of Newport. Essentially, what it does is it just, it makes administration of the grant program more efficient by, instead of having all of the different towns applying for this funding and having to do the administration and the monitoring and the reporting, it puts all of that with one community, since that community, Newport was already going to apply for the Women's Resource Center and the Housing Resource Board for the same exact activities, it basically just streamlines and consolidates the effort. And there's a form, actually, a specific form that the state created for this assignment and assumption, which I'm happy to provide you if you'd like to see it.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to comment on the community development block grant? Anyone from the audience like to comment? I'll close the public portion of this hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CDBG 2017 grant application. Do you want me to read the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, whereas funds are available under Rhode Island Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the Executive Office of Commerce, Office of the Housing and Community Development, and whereas the governor of the state of Rhode Island has authorized the director of said department slash office to disburse such funds, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Tiverton that application be made to undertake a local community development block grant program, now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of Tiverton that the filing of this application for the amount of $180,550 to implement the activities proposed herein, hereby authorize that Jan H. Ritzma, Chief Executive Officer, is hereby authorized and directed to file this application with the Office of Housing and Community Development to provide any additional information or documents requested, required by said office, to make any assurances required in connection with this program, to execute an agreement with the state of Rhode Island, and to otherwise act as the representative of the town of Tiverton in all matters relating to this application and any award which may be based upon this application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Would you like to put in the public service three and...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, and I amend my motion to assign public service items number three and four to the city of Newport.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Six to one. Did you get that, Jeanne? Six, four, one against. Councilor Shaffet.
Hey, good to hear. We start at seven.
She's had a lot to do today. Town Council sitting as a board of licensing, Michael... I always say his name wrong. Napolitano, DBC, Tiki Jack Shack, 33 Taxist and Terrorist, request pedo-hawker license subject to meeting all legal requirements. You've had this in the past, last year. Any questions from the clerk? Is everything in order?
It will be before we give him his license.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the pedo/hawker's license for Michael Napolitano, DBC, Tiki Jack Shack, 33 Taxist and Terrorist, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
One question. Where is Taxist and Terrorist?
You know...
Is that a new street?
I don't know.
It's William Barton Reserve.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Because that's new to me.
I was wondering why that was, too.
Yep.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. No appointments or resignations this evening, no unfinished business, financial business. Tiverton Fire Chief Lloyd, approval transfers totaling $40,000 to cover overtime through June 30th from account number 3310-5101, salary for $25,500. Account 3310-5111, EMT incentive $4,500. Account 3310-5107, holidays $5,000. Account 331-5110, educational allowances $1,500. Account 3310-5168, clothing allowance $1,000. Account 3310-5102, clerk salary $2,500 to account 3310-5104, overtime totaling $40,000.
Chief Floyd, something looks different about you. Much better looking, correct?
Before we go on, I just have a question for the administrator, and I know Chief Floyd's not here. It's kind of unfair to ask you this, but I've been looking at the overtime account, and we have $4,000 in left there, and it looks like we're using about $10,000 a month, maybe $11,000. I was wondering if it would be appropriate if we only put $20,000 into this account, and then the next meeting, we look at where it's at then, because I think $40,000 is a little bit too much, considering we only have two more months to go. Would that be appropriate? Well, this is at the end of April. I have exactly what we have in there now. As of this day, we have $4200 in there. So if we put, say, to make it simple, just put the salary $25,500 in there. Go ahead, Denise. I know, I don't, I just stand your notes. Go ahead.
That's through, there's one more payroll in April. So that's not for the whole month.
Okay, so there's one more payroll in April?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think 40 is appropriate.
And you think the entire 40 will be spent?
Right, that includes the pay period this week.
I'm sorry. All right, so...
They have a little meeting.
Yeah, they're having a little meeting up at the podium. Okay, so you're saying that the, that there's still one more pay period left in April.
There's five left, but there's one more in April, yes, and that one was $8,300 roughly. We haven't processed payroll yet, but that's what it was.
So, and, okay, so I get what you're saying.
April's going to be $18,000. What did you say?
April's going to be $18,000?
What was the month-to-date for April, right there in front of you? It's $10,000, right?
$10,000, it's just way out of whack.
And then, the payroll coming up is $8,000 something, so...
Through the overtime, from the 16th through the 23rd, the pay period is 76, 80, 26 is what I have.
Okay.
Thank you. The first thing I wanted to note is that when I went through the minutes that you approved earlier, you had noted that there was a shortfall likely to occur, that we needed to take some action to make sure that money would be available to pay what had to be paid. You've also made clear that you're concerned about how much money is being spent on overtime, so we certainly went over this. I believe that the current situation is largely due to vacancies and people being out on injured on-duty status, things like that. So, I certainly have gone through it with the chief on that, and as far as I could tell, this was needed, and it's a realistic estimate of what we will need for the rest of this fiscal year.
I'm just concerned because there's other accounts in this budget that are going to have shortfalls also.
You can always move the money.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
And the other thing that might be good to mention is that I do think the department is making an effort to reduce overtime by doing the lateral hirings and, you know, backfilling a position so that we have, in fact, less overtime coming.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move $25,000 from account 3310-5101 to $4,500 from account 3310-5111, $5,000 from account 3310-5107, $1,500 from account 3310-5110, $1,000 from account 3310-5168, $2,500 from account 3310-5102, for an amount totaling $40,000 to account number 3310-5104, overtime.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Town Administrator, request approval for transfer $28,500 from account 9660-8858 to the Cassidy Bond Refinancing Savings to account 1050-7191 to Legal Expenses Labor Council.
Thank you. This is a significant transfer. The next one is even larger, and I'm reluctant to request it. On the other hand, we currently have a negative balance in the Legal Services Labor Council account of over, almost $16,000. Add to that what we just got in as the invoice from Labor Council for March, and the fact that we have three more months to go, I believe that we need this money to be able to cover those costs.
And the fact that we are in negotiations with the police.
Correct, correct. That's an important...
And we are in, well, at this point, the fire is going to be going into arbitration, so that's all been costly the last couple of months with the Labor Council. entertain a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrator's request to transfer $28,500 from account 9660-8858, Cassidy Bond Refinancing Savings to account 1050-7191, Legal Expenses, Labor Council.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator requests approval for transfer $76,000 from account 9660-8858, Cassidy Bond Refinancing Savings to account 2300-5295, unfunded liability.
This is based on a current negative balance of almost $14,000 in that account, as well as the anticipated retirement, or, yeah, I think it's retirement in both cases, of two members of the fire department, and a calculation of what payout will be required in those cases. I will say that one case is expected to require payout as early as within a month, and the other one is estimated to happen by the end of June, but we don't know for sure when. So, you could choose to hold off on, say, $20,000 if you wanted to, but it is expected that we will need to do this this fiscal year. And the other one that I should mention is actually DPW, and Bill is here, who had given me an estimate of the one payout that will be needed in that department, which is, by the way, a lot smaller payout, so...
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrator's request of a transfer of $76,000 from account 9660-8858, Cassidy Bond Refinancing Savings to account 2300-5295, unfunded liability.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Before you vote, how much money is in this account, that we keep taking all this money out of?
Cassidy Bond Savings. Denise, are you still here?
He's hiding in the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, it's in here.
Page nine.
Page nine, Denise. Whenever someone comes, it's an answer. So, am I looking at...
104,000, maybe 71.
104,000.
It's under debt service, about 1, 2, 3, 4 down?
Yep. So it's 104.
Not after this.
Not after this.
No. It's going to be about four grand.
Yeah, I mean...
That's why, and I should have mentioned this, that the treasurer and I consulted on this and decided that this was probably the only option we have to cover this.
We need to stop unfunding stuff, and stop putting money away for this stuff. I mean, this is, money's here to pay for it, we need to pay these bills, but this is, this is why Tiverton is in the shape it's in, so...
This budget is very tight, extremely tight.
Wait till the next one comes.
It's going to get tighter as May and June comes along, so, and we suspected... So, and we suspected that it was a pretty tight budget to begin with. So, um, so I have a motion in a second. We had discussion. All those in favor? Again. Six, one. New business, DPW Director William Anderson requests permission to advertise and hire head mechanic replacement.
Thank you, Madam President.
And this mechanic has been very valuable to us. It will be solely missed.
So my head mechanic gave me his two-week notice effective last week. His last day will be May 4th. He's had twenty years in. He's going on to better patch, greener patches, so he hopes. We will miss him, but I do need permission now to hire and, obviously, to advertise and hire for a new head mechanic. This, just so the council understands that this is going to create some financial conditions for a while, because the, my mechanic's helper is not the head mechanic. So where DPW, it's not just affects DPW, it's also gonna affect the Fire Department, because we take care of the Fire Department vehicles as well.
How about the police?
No.
No.
Police have their own, home mechanic. So we'll, we'll work as best we can, but we may have to outsource some things depending on what happens. We'll have to wait and see at that time.
Like entertained a motion?
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to DPW Director William Anderson to go ahead and hire or advertise and hire a head mechanic replacement.
Motion's been made in second. All those in, oh, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Charter Review Commission, Charter Review Commission Resolution. At this point, I'd like to, I'd like to just discuss this. This has been on our agenda, in our consent agenda, a request for this, for the, I think twice now. This might be the third time. Tony, I would like your legal opinion on this resolution they're asking us to do.
Well, there's a couple of things going on here. And before Mr. Daglish asks, I'm gonna ask for the microphone.
Yeah, Tom is gonna tell you to speak up.
Speak up!
I got you, Tom.
He wasn't using the microphone, Tom.
I was listening.
Oh, I got it.
The adoption of amendments to a charter is under Article thirteen, Section six of the state constitution. And you can have a charter commission, but it goes to the legislative body of the town as to whether or not it goes on. The legislative body of the town is the town council. I know the charter commission is of the opinion that because they're elected, they too are a legislative body, but, but they're not. And secondly, under the charter, that's Section twelve oh five A, you know, the, the charter commission has a, I'm sorry. The charter commission has a defined role in the process, and basically what they do is, is come up with proposals to amend the town charter. That hasn't happened yet because they haven't forwarded it along to you. But I've read the communication that they have for you here, and they're basically saying, look, we voted to file suit on this if you don't, if you don't agree that you're gonna put the proposals that we have on to the charter. That's a little unfair, because it hasn't, hasn't, hasn't been here yet. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, is, you know, the, the, under the town charter, the charter commission has one defined role, and that is to come up with proposals to forward to the town council. They certainly don't have the legal authority to file suit for anybody under the charter. And, you know, I, I, I'm concerned about that. It's, for those of you that were here for the Board of Canvassers meeting, that, to me, them filing a lawsuit, aside from the fact that it doesn't comport with the state constitution, is also a charter violation in and of itself. So I'm a little concerned about the communication. I think what needs to happen here is, is whatever proposals they are have to come out to the town council. You have to review them, and whichever ones you think are worthy, you can, you know, you can forward it along to the voters. Now, in 2016, the town council here voted to place some amendments on it. Didn't come from the charter commission, but the council placed them on, on the ballot. Some passed, some didn't, I believe. So I, I only bring that up because it's clear under the state constitution that ultimately for amendments to a town charter to get out to a vote goes through the town council. And yes, you have the ability to say, charter commission, you've done this, but these are the ones that we want to do. You have that discretion. It's not ministerial. And I can say, and I, I've read Mr. Coulter's memorandum, they're not a legislative body under the charter. As a matter of fact, there's a law, there's a, there's case law in there. So, that's my point. I understand that, you know, they're gonna be coming here. Mr. Rahm is gonna say something.
Well, I, I...
But, but before we get to that, I, I want you to know what, what the defined role of the charter commission is under your town charter, under the state constitution, what your roles are, and you can go from there.
So you're advising to do not agree to this resolution?
Absolutely not. And by the way...
It's totally unfair, because we haven't even seen anything, so we don't even know if we would put them all on there. Nothing has been presented to us as of yet.
You, you may well, and, and by the way, that's the next thing, too. You don't want to make it so that, you know, you're agreeing to things that you don't see. I, I just think that that's improper for the town council to do anyway, and if the lawsuit gets filed, well, you know, I mean, that's what always happens anyway.
With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, we disregard this, whatever, whatever the commission wants to call it.
Voter Protection Resolution.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we're gonna disregard this resolution from the Charter Review Commission.
Do I have a second? Do we need to make a motion to say no to this? Why don't we do it once and for all?
You don't need to, but you can.
Why don't we do it once and for all? That's my opinion.
Well, I would, I would like to hear from them and see, just to see what they have to say. I mean, they...
Well, why don't we have a second, and then we'll have discussion, and we can hear from them if we like? Do I have a second? Thank you.
Madam President, just before we, before we get to that, I just want to make sure that in Mr. DeSisto's statement, it, it's just not the town council deciding it. We have a public hearing... to hear from the community on whether these recommendations from the Charter Review are put forth to the ballot. So it's, it's not done in a vacuum. There is a public hearing.
I beg your pardon. You're correct.
And Joan, now that you brought that up, we've been looking at our calendars, and Nancy needs all of this to go to the Board of Elections as of July sixteenth? I'm sorry, August, I'm sorry. August, Dave. So what I was thinking, that we asked the Charter Commission to come with their proposals. I was thinking somewhere in June, June fifteenth, and they can send their proposals to us, and then we can have a meeting with them. We can discuss all the proposals, and then have the public hearing, I'm thinking the first week in July.
Madam President?
We can get this process and get it all to Nancy. The public hearing may take more than one night. I'm sure it will, so we can continue it to another night. And then after the public hearing, then the council will take votes.
And I, I would maybe recommend that if they don't have everything ready, that they get us as much as they have, so that we can put that forth, and then follow up with whatever is remaining.
Because there's nothing stopping us having public hearings with just what we receive and then continuing to the other things.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just since it's, since it's in front of us, and I know members of the Charter Review Commissioner here, it should be worth noting, and I did mention this the last meeting, they do not possess any such title as Commissioner, and I'm a little perturbed that these continue to come from their communications. That's not a, that's not a title that you possess under the charter. And furthermore, there is no such thing as bylaws for your committee, nor is there any executive committee. And I've seen those referenced in meeting minutes before, and I'm a little concerned that, you know, in light of what the solicitor said, that these things still continue to come in front of us. And I would like to remind you, as the council president has, and as Counselor Shabitt has, and the solicitor has, you have a job to do, and like Bill Belichick says, do your job.
Are you speaking to me?
Well, no, as a commission, not as you...
As a commission.
Can I respond?
Any further, yes, wait one second. Any further discussion from the council right at this moment? Now, Randy has asked that Mr. Rahm speak. Please be brief, but you may present something.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. What I'd like to discuss is the actual Exhibit A, the Voter Protection Resolution, excuse me, it's called the... I've got it here.
I thought we were being brief here.
Yeah, I, I have a motion in a second on the floor. Could you...
Madam President, I'd like to speak.
Well, and...
And I will be brief.
If I grant permission for you to speak, and I will grant permission for you to speak, because the council is asked, but I'm asking you to be brief.
Okay. Our, our, our resolution protects our work, and it protects the voters, okay? We've worked diligently since July. I think we've had twenty-six meetings. We've processed over a hundred and twenty-six proposal. I suspect that number will go higher to a hundred and forty. And it is a duly-elected body, okay? It's a democratic process that we follow. We listen to the people. We have passed a lot of their, a lot of their proposals, and it'll, it'll, it'll go before you. And that's what we're trying to protect here, is the democratic process. It's interesting that your town solicitor has, just no more than a couple hours ago, convinced the Board of Canvassers to suppress...
All right, this is not what this is about. What this is about is you have diligently worked, and you've gotten a lot of proposals from people, and you are deciding what you want on the ballot as a commission. You, you, you've gotten a bunch of proposals, and I'm sure not all of them will be your suggestions. But as Tony said, according to the charter and its past precedent, it comes to us, and we are not saying, we have not seen anything yet, and you are assuming that we are not gonna put everything on there, present it to us, and we will make the decision. But that is the way this works, and that's what the state constitution says, and that's what our charter says. So how you can say that we are stopping something that you haven't even given to us yet is absurd. We, we have not even seen it.
Excuse me, Madam President. I directed my comments to your town solicitor.
Call the question.
All right, so I have a vote to call a question.
Madam President, I wasn't done.
Well, I know, but he's just calling the vote.
Madam President, I feel like you're violating my First Amendment rights to express, to express my ideas.
I'm, I'm really not, Mr. Rahm.
I'd like to have a chance to speak.
No.
No?
Jeff, one person from your commission can speak, and Mr. Rahm is asked to speak.
Again, you restrict speech. You restrict the democratic process.
I want you to listen to me, Mr. Rahm.
Robert's rule says, when I call the question, we have to take a vote, and we call the question.
Mr. Rahm, I just want you to listen to me. You have asked us to, to, to approve this resolution. We have all read this resolution. We know what your opinion is. It's in several newspapers, actually, what your opinions are. We are not saying that we are not gonna put all your proposals on. We are saying that they need to present it to us. We need to have a public hearing. We need to make an informed decision on what the voters want. At the public hearing, voters can tell us, and that's the way the process occurs. You have asked us to put this resolution on now. It's been on two or three of my agendas, and, and it's been on the consent agenda, and no council has pulled it off to be approved. We, we understand where you're coming from. We all read it, and...
You, you understand where I'm coming from?
Oh, yes.
Where is it?
You, you want the commission to, to put everything that you suggested on the ballot. Is that where you're coming from?
You're telling me. You, you said you understood.
All right, Madam President.
I, I called the question. I mean...
We called the question, so...
Madam President, can I yield my time to Mr. Carron?
You're not getting it. John just asked to just call the vote.
Call, call the question.
So I, I need to have a vote to call a vote, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so John has asked to call the vote. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Oh, second. A motion to call the vote in a second. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, against, two, so I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor of the motion? And that's the original motion?
The motion's to disregard this memo.
Didn't I already second that?
You seconded it, yes.
Yes, you already seconded it. Now, all those in favor?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
I have something to say.
From the council.
From the council.
The public's not allowed to speak on the main motion.
From the council.
I, I, I would like to speak on two things that have been previously said. My opinion is that what really protects the voters is to follow the rule of law. That if we really want to protect the voters and the voters' rights, that we follow the rule of law, that we follow what is laid out in the charter, the process that's laid out in the charter for amending the charter, as well as, as it's stated in the Constitution of the State of Rhode Island. And that's what really protects the voters, number one. And number two, you know, one of the things to me that is really mind-boggling is that we're talking about the democratic process and protecting the democratic process. I cannot think of any democracy anywhere in the world where the democratic process involves a legislative body taking a vote to promise to vote yes on an entire slate of things that they have never even seen. In my opinion, that happens in countries that are not democratic, and, and there is nothing about trying to insist one body will vote yes on a whole number of things they've never actually seen ahead of time is not democratic. Thank you.
I, I, I actually, actually beg your pardon. When you call the question, there is no main motion. It's just you call the question that was voted on, so now you just vote.
And no discussion?
Yes, that's great. Call the question. That's the whole point of it.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Six, against, one. Thank you.
Madam President, can I just make one comment?
Yeah, I guess so. Go ahead, Joan. Tony's saying yes, so go ahead.
Just want to be very specific. We are representative democracy, which is different. We are a republic, so the people vote in this body to govern, okay? So we are trying to do our job, and we're trying to follow the charter. We're trying to follow the state constitution. And I think we are following that process. That's my only comment.
Yes, and John, as John Adams said, it's a government of laws and not men. You're correct that this is a republic and that you're an elected body yourselves, and you have a defined, you have defined duties in the, in the state constitution and the town charter, as does the charter commission. Those are my points.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I just direct one question to the solicitor?
No, no, Jeff, sit down.
A point of information.
Jeff, sit down.
Point of information.
Jeff, I will have you escorted out. Sit down, please.
Just a question to the solicitor.
No, Jeff, we're done with this discussion. You may call him tomorrow and ask a question. Bids and requests for proposals, there's non-town administrator announcements. Tiven and Litter Cleanup Week, Saturday, April twenty-eighth through May fifth. We have read the resolution. Council announcements. I'm sorry, did you want to say anything else? Okay? Council announcements?
Yes. I'd like to know if we could set up a workshop with the Cemetery Commission and the Solicitor and the Clerk to go over what memorandum means, because there were some questions at the last meeting, and the plot cards. So they would like to get a workshop together with you and the Clerk, if possible?
Yes, yes.
Madam President?
They can contact the clerk. The chairman will contact the clerk, and she'll set it up with Tony. How's that?
Madam President? Well, I just have something to say when you get it done. You all set?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so on this discussion now, that's counsel point, I want the people of Tiven to know that their voices will be heard at the public meeting on these, on this charter review, because we don't know what it is, and they don't know what it is, and they'll, their voice will be heard then, at the public. So once we find out what it is, they do have a voice. We're not trying to take that away. That's it.
Okay, next. I have an announcement. We had to cancel the casino hearing because, because of advertisement reasons. So Nancy emailed all of you to ask if you could make, I guess, the twenty...
Twenty-second or the twenty-third?
22nd or the 23rd?
No. Yeah, the 22nd or the 23rd of May. Now, all of you could do it, but John, so then we decide, then, it's very tight with the auditorium, and we're having it in the auditorium because I'm afraid that a lot of people are gonna be coming.
Madam President, I got one more date today that the school would allow.
Go ahead.
And that is Thursday, May 31st.
Thursday, May 31st. Now, John, you said you couldn't make that either.
I will not be able to attend that either.
So the only thing I...
No, I'm serious. You want to see my schedule?
I've talked to Council Edwards, and I think he's been in agreement that we may move on with this.
It's got, if it's gotta get done, it's gotta get done.
Because we're not going to June, and then we have other hearings for other things. So Nancy, what date could everyone make? The 20...
I think the solicitor had a, one of the dates.
Which ones?
May 22nd or 23rd.
Tuesday or Wednesday, Tony?
The Wednesday I can make, but not the Tuesday.
Can everyone make the Wednesday?
I can't make the Wednesday.
What time? I land, I land in Boston at 5:30 on the Wednesday.
You can't make it, Joan?
I could show up late to that meeting.
Tony, could you make May 31st, Thursday?
Yes.
Could everyone make May 31st, except John?
I, depending on what time I land, I may be able to make that meeting.
Okay.
I might be late.
So, May 31st, Thursday. And the auditorium is available. The thing with the auditorium is it's the end of the year for the high schools, so there's a lot of events going on in that auditorium, so these were the only dates that we have.
Can we do the middle school?
Is there a roof on the middle school yet?
Yes, we could do the middle school.
Well, we have the, the public hearing for the budget at the middle school.
You're absolutely right, but we still need a...
We still need a date that everybody can make it.
Yeah, it's becoming like...
I think we should go with the 31st.
I think we should go for the 31st, and both John can get in.
I might be able to be there.
And maybe we could talk to the airline and get him here.
Would you speak to Mr. Russo?
Any other town, no, any other? Go ahead.
Madam President, so I would just like to, first of all, thank my very wonderful group of volunteers who came down to the beach where we planted 2,000 beech grass plugs at Grinnell's. But I'd also like to let everybody know that we still have about 40 rosebushes and several big bundles or maybe another...
You've got rosebushes in my garage, too, you know that.
Yeah, I know. Another, we have another 400 or 500 beech grass plugs to plant, so if anybody would like to volunteer, just let me know, because...
When do you wanna do it?
It's a little weather-dependent in when, when we can get grouped together, so I'm not setting a date. I'm just asking if anybody would like to volunteer. We'd be more than happy to have them help us.
I'll do it again, and I'm sure Christine will do it with me, and Joe will do it with me.
And Joe.
Depends on when it is.
And Nancy will do the one blade that, that she planted.
What, what time is that meeting on the 31st?
7 o'clock. Any other announcements? All right, town solicitor announcements?
You know, I, he had asked for a memorandum on the taxation of low to moderate income housing, and the state rule by statute is 8% of the gross income. Although, as my memo says, you do have the option. There is an enabling statute that allows you to enact an ordinance if you want to tax a low to moderate income housing units at a lesser rate than that. Memo to me speaks for itself. There has been litigation on this, issue on the 8%, but it's held up. That's the way Rhode Island Housing interprets this. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Any questions from the council?
Dave Robert contacted me today, and he has read the solicitor's memo, and he had a couple of ideas, and he asked that he won't, wasn't gonna be able to attend tonight, but if he wanted it on a future meeting, he would like to give some comments as well.
That would be great if you could come.
I'll try and resolve any questions.
All right, and we'll put it on the main, the main meeting. I don't know if it'll be the first or the second, but we'll look at that. Town administrator, did you have any other announcements? Okay. Town clerk?
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody that the Financial Town Referendum is gonna take place on Saturday, May 19th, at the Tiverton High School. There will be absentee voting at the town hall on the 17th and 18th of May here at the town hall, and that the hearing for the Financial Town Referendum will be held on May 3rd at the high school at 7 o'clock. Yeah, we'll put it on the website and put some notices around. I also wanted to make mention that I received a letter just today from Senator Whitehouse, and it was in response to the offshore oil and gas development on the letters that we sent to him, that he appreciated it, and he has co-sponsored some legislation on this. So I will put it officially on next week's, next meeting for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Council Edwards?
Madam, Madam President, can I just ask the town clerk to explain the process of the absentee?
Madam, are we following an agenda here? I mean...
All right, Jeff, that's on the FTR, the information on the FTR. We're gonna be posting that all on the website, town website as well.
But the absentee voting takes place here at the town hall on the two days prior. It starts at 8 and goes to 8 at night, or 7 at night, I believe, or 8. And all you have to do is say you're not able to attend, not able to make it on the 19th, and you can come in here and vote. The whole process, you put it right into the machine. It's, it's fine.